Good evening and welcome to the September 20th regularly scheduled school committee meeting. It is now 6:00 PM and I will officially call the meeting to order. As a reminder, this meeting is being both audio and videotaped and I would ask that if anyone else is doing so, so please let us know. Let's see, any hands? So with that, we will stand for questions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We can start with a roll call. Pam, do you want to be starting us off?
Sure. Hello everyone. Pamela Prayer, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Gregory Thompson.
Antonella Rochella.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Kara Trilio.
Bill Fonseca.
Elizabeth Marcin Boucher.
Mia Cassidy.
And welcome Nick. This is your first meeting with us.
Yes, it is.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. We appreciate it. We have some minutes that we can take care of right off the bat.
Yeah, do you want to motion to amend the agenda?
Um, we can't, we can do the minutes, there's only, is that okay? Yeah. I don't know if I saw it for yet anymore, so what?
Move to approve the September 2nd 2021 regular session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Greg.
A second.
Second by Beth. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Okay, so motion carries five to zero. And then the next step?
Approval, I move to approve the September 7th 2021 regular session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Bill.
A second.
Second by Beth. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed nay. And that motion carries five to zero. Uh, we do have Donna with us on, we'll entertain a motion to amend the agenda that Donna can give her presentation related to item 7.1.
Uh, are we able to turn that screen on?
Oh.
Oh yeah. What, Mr. Mackey, can we turn on the screen?
Can we turn on the TV screen? Just because um, I don't have my computer.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
That's okay.
I can't see it though. I can't see so much on.
I'm like, uh, I can't, it's the sending system, I can't.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
That would help, right? There it is. There we go.
Okay. Thank you. Well, thank you.
You bet.
I'll move to modify the agenda and move item 7.1 to the next order of business.
Motion made by Greg. Second, second by Antonella. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. And that motion carries five to zero. I believe Donna is with us.
Donna, can you run you?
She is. She is. Hi Donna.
Hi.
How are you?
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Donna. Hey Donna.
This is new business regarding the hanging up of banners for recreational softball during games.
Sure. So we have Donna Prayer with us, who's the Director of the East Long Meadow Recreation Department. Uh, and the Recreation Department has put in a request to hang banners and if I'm understanding it correctly, and I know that Donna will walk us through this. Um, the banners are actually to thank individuals and organizations that have contributed and volunteered recently, actually, to actually help keep our fields maintained. And, and I think, um, what the Rec Department may be asking is to hang the banners during games and then remove them after games, but I'll let Donna walk us through that.
Yes, that's exactly right. Um, we're getting a lot of energy from the public and their residents, our, our coaches. And this past weekend, uh, I would say redid three fields, did a remarkable job. They had huge equipment in there, rollers, uh, different pieces of equipment, I don't even know what they were, but they, they knocked out in four hours, three diamonds and did just an absolutely terrific job. DPW got behind during the rain and Maple Shade in particular was a mess and so was Birchland, both diamonds at Birchland. So we struggle with how do we recognize these volunteers and these companies that are coming in to help us with these special projects? And what I'm, I'm, the softball asked me if they could hang them on the, uh, on the fence and what, what I was proposing maybe is that, not maybe, I'm proposing that if they could hang them up during the games so that, that, that the public that attend the games can see that our diamonds look nice because of volunteers, uh, not only donating equipment, but labor, fuel for their machines, et cetera. Uh, it would be similar to the ones that we had at the ice rink last winter. They would all be uniform. Um, they would come through the Rec Department. Just to keep them, I mean, we're not going to do anything crazy like buy one pizza, get six free or something like that. We're just strictly, thank you for supporting our Spartans type with a company logo is what we're looking at.
Do you have any questions for Donna?
I don't think so. I know in the past we've tended to not do, um, the banners, something that's permanent, but I don't particularly have a problem if they come down after a game. You know, because we, you do want to not get the clutter and that kind of stuff, but I, I personally, I know that based on past practices, we haven't done it, but if it's something that's just up for the games themselves, I'm okay with that.
And just if I may clarify, I think, uh, the policy talks about advertising.
Right.
Where I think the intent of this request is more about thanking and, and I get it that there is an element of advertising to it because there are companies whom we're thanking. But it's a little different when we, in this, our advertising policy goes back probably 12 years maybe.
Yeah.
It was, it was more around is, should we be generating revenue? Um, to help out with the athletic program and different things and putting up then permanent banners around the stadium fences and so forth. And, and the school committee, I think at the time, voted unanimously not to do that.
Right.
So.
But I think this is a nice way of, you know, thanking people for what they do.
Donna, it's Greg Thompson. Um, I was there actually Maple Shade with our new referees for, for the, alright, games at Maple Shade when you were all there. Uh, and it was a huge crew. I saw at least three bobcats on the ground, multiple bump trucks, probably 30 or so volunteers, so um, quite an effort by the community, certainly appreciated by, I know the Rec Department and all the youth sports. And it's good to see just East Long Meadow stepping up and appreciative of that. Um, Donna, are you proposing one sign per, per field? Is that the idea or is that what we're talking about?
Well, this weekend it was Armant Trucking and Deco Landscaping, so they also did some work at Pine Knoll. And I, I have their banners already that, that I put up there. At, um, and I just suggested that they get, uh, calibiners on the corners, snap them on the fence, put them up for the game, take them down. We also had a baseball group do something similar just for games at Heritage this year, just because when, you know, the biggest crowds are there, like I said, to showcase our fields and, and to take pride in our volunteers that got them, got them in the shape they're in.
Yeah, so certainly thankful for all the efforts of the volunteers as Beth was just referring to, I, I'm just multi, little worried about the slippery slope that it creates in terms of
Absolutely.
or to future advertisements, but, uh, like you said and others, it was a huge effort, so some acknowledgement is certainly appropriate, but I would just, um, persuade not to head too far in this direction with the school fields as we get closer to, to that policy.
Although the Heritage Field is good, like if you wanted to leave them up.
That's not a toss though, yeah.
It isn't, but I'm just saying. I definitely like the idea of them coming and being at, on our fields with the banners, that's great. But I'm saying if you wanted maybe to leave them up a little bit longer, if there's a big event or something, you know, Heritage might be a good place. They wanted to keep them up for a week or two or something like that, but I'm good with that.
I think, yeah, the Rec Department's finding a ton of creative ways too to be able to thank sponsors. Our newsletter has something in it, um, every month that's highlighting volunteers and highlighting local companies who are contributing, so I think to Greg's point, like it's great to see the community come around and rally around, um, the field, which, you know, inadvertently supports the schools because those are on
It does, yeah.
school property, so it's great to see that collaboration between the DPW and, um, local businesses because it's all in service of the kids, so.
Donna, when is the softball season end? When is the, end of that season?
We're in fall ball right now. We have a U-12, so right now it's just, uh, it's an out of, out of season team that's playing.
So when would you have the signs? In the, in the spring?
Yes.
Okay, so for the 2022 spring softball season.
Correct.
Okay. I would move that we, if I may, approve the request from the Rec Department to hang ban, banners up for the 2022 softball season.
Motion made by Greg.
Can I, which are temporary banners, they're going to be put up and down when games are played. Thank you.
Yes. Yes, no problem. Also made by Greg. A second. Second by Beth. Any further discussion? I would just say thank you again. The sound looked great this weekend and feels amazing.
And to the companies that helped us.
Companies.
I know, because it's one thing to sit and complain, it's another thing to go out there and fix it.
That's right.
So.
Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. That motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Donna.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Alright, so now we have an opportunity for visitors to address the committee. There's nobody in attendance, um, in the building, but if there's anybody in the virtual arena who would like to address the committee now is the time.
No hands, hold on.
I don't see any hands, so we will move forward to committee, ends up committee communications. Greg, you want to start and then we'll, we'll finish with Nick?
Sure, I will start and I don't have finished in this evening, so thank you.
There you go. Antonella?
Um, I was able to attend a couple of sports games over the weekend, um, the girls JV soccer game here and also, um, Pope Francis, the boy soccer game. And our kids did a great job. Um, they did both win. Um, we have amazing athletes, um, on our team. And I managed to stop by the girls' car wash on Saturday.
Car wash?
Yeah. There's a lot of, there's a lot of people there.
Did they clean your car well?
Yes.
Well, how do you control it?
Yes, they all did an amazing job cleaning your car. But it was nice just to see all the girls and parents too there, just working together and, and being together, so it's for a nice community.
I don't have anything in sight though.
I'm all sighted.
I just have to say, I heard that they had a, a good game the other night, a couple of weeks ago for the football team and it was my daughter's first time where she was like, she was, it was a great time. She, it was like, it was the first time she felt like she was able to do something in high school because even in her first fall as a freshman, they were worried about the stupid mosquitoes. So she was really excited. I didn't go because she needed to be there without her mom, but she said it was fun and she felt great and I hope we can continue on with that because it's what we want for our kids, so.
We did, we did treat for the mosquitoes this year.
Thank you.
Both the stupid ones and the smart ones.
Uh, Nick, do you have anything you want to, um, keep us abreast about?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I wasn't exactly sure what I prepared, so I came up with some things to say, but, um, at least for me as a student, um, I felt like things are now back to like, um, essence of like normalcy because like, um, we're all able to sit in class, like it's a normal class size, there's like nothing online and it just feels like we're in class. I mean, we have masks on, but I mean, like, that's really not that big of a deal.
Um.
So everything I've heard so far was sports have been going very well and as a member and captain of the cross-country team, I feel like we are now like kind of past COVID and more as a team because like last year we couldn't do stuff with, with the girls team, couldn't do stuff with buses, we had meets at the same place, but I mean, like this past weekend, we had this big meet at the school and that felt like my freshman sophomore year, like it was just such great to have everyone there. Everyone was running, there were medals at the end, it was like a great experience for everyone, like we were all like bonding as a team. Um, clubs have also been starting at school. I know, um, these past two weeks they've been doing, um, oh, oh, elections and, um, some meetings of, and the student, um, government for each grade has also been like, um, doing, um, meetings and talks of fundraisers. Um, I know since I'm in the class office of 2022 that we're planning a fundraiser at the end of September, possibly a drive-through in mid-October, um, but that's kind of just what I had. I don't really know if that was perfect, but.
Thank you. Nice to have you speaking up for that.
Thanks.
It's nice to get the student perspective.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I missed that last night.
Did they do the unfair at lunch, alright?
They haven't really, I haven't really heard talks about that, but I do know from some of my friends that it's going to be soon within the next two weeks, but I should probably know if I'm present in a med side club, so, like, we haven't really talked about it, so, um, yeah, yes.
So it's coming.
What is it?
They, they usually do it at lunch, um, which would be another return to sort of normalcy.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they have the clubs advertise and they all set up tables and.
Yeah, we get to walk around and then they kind of say what the, what the club does and like, oh, they sign up sheets and this is the day that it meets and this is the times and this is what we try to do with the club, stuff like that.
They may have to organize it so that it flows into maybe one of the gyms or that foyer.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great. That's awesome.
But if we have it back, that'd be awesome.
It would be.
Well, thank you. Welcome again.
We'll wear a mask for it.
Thank you.
Glad to have you as part of the team.
It's great to be here. I'm excited. It's kind of fun.
This is a good meeting. We touched on.
Yeah, like I'm, I'm always know that's exactly going on, but starting to learn it's kind of fun to hear.
We're a good group.
Yeah.
This next presentation is going to be really.
Oh, it's ruined it.
Okay.
Alright, you're first in, first out.
Thanks Nick, I appreciate it, Greg.
Yes.
Alright, so with that, we will move to, um, an update on the EOPS help and quarantine protocols and Kelly is joining us tonight, correct?
She is, uh, and I believe she is in the.
Gone to my friend's house in the. Thank you. She's raising her hand. That's okay, sorry.
And actually, if I may, Mr. Mackey, share my screen.
You should be also.
Hello.
Kelly, how are you?
I'm good. How is everybody?
Doing well, thanks. Nice to see you.
Hi, Kelly.
Hi, Kelly.
Okay. There we go. So, Ms. Lombard, who is our nurse leader, and I, um, wanted to take the opportunity because we know that, um, this year with our protocols and, um, some changes into, in how we did things from last year as well as, uh, some guidance from DESI that's different from last year, uh, that there can be confusion and, um, we're also realizing that as we work through different situations that there will be situations that change our protocols. Uh, and so we, we want to not only let our parents and families know that, um, we just want to make sure that people realize that one, the biggest thing we want to do is always keep people safe, but we want to work with our families and these are somewhat living documents because of that, so as we go through, um, our different situations where we might have some contact tracing after, um, learning about a positive case, I, each, each one of those is unique and each one teaches us something and so these have changed a little bit since the beginning of school. But I wanted to start with the one that, um, and Ms. Lombard, please feel free to jump in at any moment if I'm off course or if there's something that we need to highlight. The one that probably is the most important and happens daily is the one that's on screen right now and this is our daily symptom checklist and the, the key to this is that every day, all of us need to just take a moment and hopefully a quiet moment after you've kind of gotten up and gotten through, um, some things and so you're sort of into your morning, just take a moment and assess, how do you feel and specifically go through some of these symptoms, but the key to this, especially as we sit here in the turn of fall, excuse me, summer to fall and we're in allergy season, I think the key are those first probably what, six or seven symptoms before you get into the ones that say not due to other known causes or in combination with other symptoms. So some of the things that we're immediately looking for are symptoms such as having a fever of 100 degrees, chills, um, or shaking and chills. A cough, not due to other, um, causes or a chronic cough that maybe you've had or someone's had over the course of a few years. Shortness of breath or difficulty breathing. Chills which will be related to the fever, muscle or body aches and one that, um, I think many people, uh, experience unfortunately as, um, if they unfortunately get COVID is a new loss of taste or smell. Those are some of the individual symptoms and then as you go down and you pick up fatigue and nasal congestion, these would be symptoms that you're looking for when they're in combination with some of the other ones above. And Ms. Lombard, did I explain that?
Yes, you did. Yes.
Uh, a couple of highlights, just so, and these are things that as we are going through and working with families, we're, um, amending. So, as you go down and it says if you've answered yes, um, just below that, we have a bullet point that I think is worth highlighting and I'll bring it up on screen, I apologize. It's the second bullet point in red there and so if a household member is symptomatic, the asymptomatic staff member or student may come to school but should isolate from this individual and wear a mask until the household member has been cleared by their physician or receives a negative PCR test or negative molecular rapid test. Parents may wish to keep their asymptomatic children home until the test results come back, uh, and basically all we're asking is keep working with us, keep contacting, um, your nurse at the building at which your children attend and we'll work through this with you. Um, you know, our nurses are incredible. They did an incredible job last year. They're doing an incredible job this year. Ms. Lombard, um, really is been the sort of the backbone to all of this and she's been just fabulous through this whole 18 months of the pandemic. Uh, and so we're, the key is we're working with our families. Uh, we're not looking to exclude, but we're looking to obviously keep people safe. Another key, and this will sort of be a segue into the full, um, protocol for quarantining, is that if someone has been fully vaccinated, that individual, even though being exposed possibly to a positive, a positive case and being possibly a close contact is allowed to come into school as long as they remain symptom-free, as long as they remain asymptomatic.
Is this one mask, is this one that's set up by the, the government or Health Department or what? Because a lot of fully vaccinated people are not showing symptoms.
Right.
You know what I mean?
This is actually, we took that from DESI, I believe.
It did, okay.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? They could be, I guess I just feel, yeah, you're vaccinated, you have no symptoms.
Some, some of the breakthrough cases, I know, so.
Alright.
We're still, we're, I think, it probably a, a good rule of thumb would be if you know that you've been exposed, take the measures, uh, to the extent possible without necessarily isolating yourself if you've been vaccinated and you're not experiencing symptoms. Take the measures of giving space and, and doing some of the other things until you're through that, you know, that five to seven day window.
Yeah.
Um, and then hopefully, uh, an individual in such a case is not coming down with COVID.
Does this, if teachers call out for this, is it come out of their sick time?
So initially, um, if they call out until they get that test, um, it's sick time, but once, um, they get that test or we've deemed them a close contact, then it's not coming from their sick time.
Okay.
So we, we'll make the adjustment, uh, but we certainly don't want, um, anyone not to call out if they're feeling they have these symptoms.
Right.
You know, call out, you know, and we'll figure this, the sick time piece out.
And have a lot of faculty been calling out because of this? Like has there been?
We have not had a, a huge amount. Last year we had more.
Okay.
Um, and, and for that matter, we have not had an incredible amount of cases right now in the schools. Um, most of the cases we can trace back similar to last year where, you know, the exposure came outside of the schools and so it's really about the close contacts. Uh, and we have fewer close contacts, which is another segue, we'll go into the protocols, I'll bring that up. This year and, and we'll explain why. So this actually comes right from the DESI guidance and is, um, originally from August 13th and then they updated it on August 30th, just as we began school and basically you still have the CDC close contact definition. However, what, um, DESI is, is saying, and they do have, uh, a medical advisory group, uh, that has helped them with this, is that there are exemptions to, uh, close contacts from quarantining. And specifically from in situations where they might be in a school setting, so individuals, as we said, who have been fully vaccinated and are symptom-free or asymptomatic, they can continue to come to school. Uh, and it's really twofold. We want them to continue to monitor and assess on a daily basis, but we also know that, um, our nurses in the buildings and our teachers, you know, may help a little bit with that monitoring just to, um, keep everybody safe. But if they're fully vaccinated and they're asymptomatic despite being possibly a close contact, um, exposed to a, a positive case, they can come to school. Classroom close contact, so people we are contacting basically are the ones who are less than three feet and have been there despite being masked for, um, over 15 minutes and, and we do have situations like that. You know, it could happen in some of our younger classrooms depending on the activities that might be going on. Um, it could also happen, um, even though at lunch we're separated, you know, there are moments where people are, are less, um, less rigid around, uh, you know, all the safety measures, I guess would be the best way to say it. And so we're, we're erring sometimes in those situations, um, a little bit more on the side of safety and contacting people, but basically if you're masked and you're three feet or more away from an individual who may have, um, unfortunately become a positive since, uh, positive case for COVID, you're not being moved into a quarantining, quarantining situation. The other exemption is on the bus. Uh, on the bus, everybody needs to be masked at all times and if you happen to be in a situation where you may have been exposed, um, that's not a situation where we would be, we might be alerting you to the fact for, um, bus riders, but we're not quarantining you. Alright, and then the final one, uh, in terms of exemptions, is someone who actually has come down with COVID. Um, basically there's a 90-day window there where after they have come through, uh, and are symptom-free, um, and feeling better, they don't have to be, whether they're exposed or not, they don't have to be quarantined. This goes on and I won't read the whole thing. I think what I'll do is bring you to a flow chart. These are all on our webpage, by the way. And so hopefully this flow chart simplifies things and, um, Ms. Lombard, anything in there that, um, I have not highlighted or you would say, um, needs to be emphasized more or just any points that we should be pointing out that maybe I've missed?
Um, no, I think, I mean, I think it's self-explanatory, but I look at this all the time, so I guess I want others' opinions. But if you're positive, then of course you go straight down and you're out for 10 days. But then, you know, we have the exemptions for the close contacts, so if you're vaccinated and you have no symptoms, you can stay in school. We do say that you can get tested at day five, like, um, like you were saying before, um, you can get tested at day five. You don't have to, but you may want to know because you may not have any symptoms, but maybe you are, you know, can pass it on. And if you're masked and three feet apart, you can stay in school. So we are, you know, we're really not getting close contacts because we're following that rule. But if you're not vaccinated and you're less than three feet in the classroom, then you would be considered a close contact. And I did check this, if you click on the East Long Meadow Public School Quarantine Protocols, it goes right to the page that Gordon just was speaking about.
There it is.
In detail.
So, um, we do have this up, uh, on the webpage for parents and this, the, the flow chart may be a little bit simpler than, um, all of the different scenarios on the quarantining protocols, uh, when exposed to a positive case. And basically just as Ms. Lombard said, it starts with a positive case. If we have a positive case and you've, either you are the positive case or you are a close contact, you can follow the flow chart and it'll give you, um, all the steps that you need to take. And if you're ever in doubt, just as I had started this presentation, please give our, our nurses in the buildings a call and they will walk you through this. You know, they, they've been doing a fantastic job and keeping that community. You know, they have been doing a fantastic job and keeping that communication between home and school, I think, is so important.
I had a quick question.
Sure.
Are the kids, do they have a set seat on the buses? Because they've been on the buses, the buses are running a little longer and it turns and...
They should be giving us seating charts, but I don't know if the drivers have actually done that.
Okay, because you've got two kids, even if they're masked, sitting side by side, and they're not vaccinated.
Right.
And they have masks on, and one of them gets COVID, shouldn't that other student be considered quarantined?
Not, not, not according to our DESI guidance. Yeah, not according to our DESI guidance.
Fifteen minutes on a bus, sitting next to each other, and that's okay.
I think the key is the fact that the windows are open.
Oh, for the, okay, okay.
And so it's similar to how right now we're seeing the outdoors. When outdoors, we can be unmasked, and I think Nick can attest to this. They were utilizing at the high school, both our courtyard and at lunch, we're utilizing it.
Yeah, no, that's good, because that's outside.
Outside.
That's actually outside.
Yeah, just to give people a chance to unmask and enjoy the outdoors. I mean, a day like today would have been great to use the courtyard.
Are we at least letting the parent of the child sitting next to the child that might have COVID know that their kid's been sitting next to this kid on a bus for more than 15 minutes?
We're working through.
With the windows open?
Yeah, we're working through.
I want me done with these, you know?
They're not direct contacts.
If they're this, if they're this close.
We're only calling the close contacts.
We're only contacting direct contact.
Yeah.
Definition, direct contacts, and that's the only way we can do it, otherwise there'll be endless amounts of them.
No, I know that, but I guess I feel if they're positive and they're sitting next to a student on a bus for like 20 minutes or more, that's actually, you know.
Right, well, basically, I would imagine the data is not showing transmission occurring with.
Okay, all right.
I would assume.
That's why.
So it's a big name.
Our students are masking, the bus has the windows open, they are, to the extent they can, the seats, depending on what grade level we're dealing with, are staying apart. It's a little more challenging to get to the high school level, so they're a little bit bigger.
They are.
We do try to keep them apart.
Okay.
Keep getting kept together.
All right.
I do think this is helpful in terms of being able to showcase that there are processes and protocols that are in place, and while each circumstance is nuanced, we're using this to guide decisions. And then if families are unclear, then they should contact the nurses or contact Central Office and be able to ask those questions, because, you know, it's nerve-wracking enough when you're experiencing this, but then not necessarily knowing what to do or how to proceed.
Right.
For the health and safety, not only of your own family, but for the kids and the people.
And I think one of the big things is, you know, is the masking. To the extent that we can stay at the three feet, I know you're worried about the bus. It's also the fact that the windows are open on the bus. But when masking, I think the key, and this was, I think, a bit of confusion, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Lombard, we would like all masks to be the ones that can cover snugly the nose and the mouth. You know, the gaiters don't do it as well, and so we really would like something like this that can be attached to the ears. And even though sometimes we do see people drop it down, you know, we might just give a gentle reminder. And we have a lot of mask breaks.
All right, my big thing was with the bus was just that, you know, they, such a brouhaha over where the seats are in the classroom, and we put in all that effort.
Right.
And really, you know what I'm saying, it's, that's, that's why. Did we ban gaiters or?
We would like to see snug masks, yeah. So basically, if someone comes in with a gaiter, a student, we would probably hand them our disposable masks, or the hospital masks.
But I think it's key to that if parents have any questions or any doubts in their mind, contact the school nurse where their child is, that's an important part of this.
Right, very much so. The communication is the big piece, because we don't want people out there with questions, not having them answered, worrying about something that maybe they don't need to worry about. Any guidance we can offer, we want to do that.
And I have some good news. I did a tally of students in grades seven through 12, and 66% of our students have had two vaccinations.
Wow, that's great to hear.
Fully vaccinated, so that is awesome. 66%.
Is it of those eligible, right, not in the district?
Right, from the seventh through 12, yes.
That's good.
Really good, yeah, it is.
So, yeah, are we going to get to 80%, do we know?
Well, we're still waiting on exactly how they're going to determine the 80%.
Yeah.
So our staff.
It's the building.
Well, our staff is also part of that equation, and so we're working with the ELEA, and I think the ELEA is going to help us figure out how many staff are vaccinated, and then we're waiting exactly how DESI wants us to work through that.
Yeah, because we could be close.
I think we will be close.
Yeah. So the town would be the other hurdle, so we just have to work in conjunction with.
With the town.
So I'm still a little bit confused, Kelly, about when a student gets vaccinated, if they get vaccinated at their pediatrician, I know how like we know that they've gotten vaccinated because you were saying you get information from that. But like if you take a student and say, for instance, they go to, I don't know, the Eastfield Mall was having a clinic or wherever they are, how, how do we get that information? And like personally, I think it should be information that's given, I don't think it should be just handed over. I think the parent should be giving it, but that's a different thing. How do we know?
So there's a registry of immunizations, and if the parent, we get it unless the parent opts out of this registry. So we have a program on our health program that we could refresh, and we, I can run a report, and I can figure out how many students in each grade had two vaccinations, which would be fully vaccinated.
So that would be regardless of where they go, just based on the information the parent puts in, will they go to CVS or Walgreens or wherever that might be?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
And I believe actually, you get the same information for flu shots, am I correct?
All immunizations, yes. As long as the parent, you know, doesn't opt out. You know, there's a few that we don't get them, and then we get them from the parents. But this is normally when we exclude kids for immunizations, and we had a few at Burchland, we had a few at Meadowbrook, and today was the day, and they're all completely compliant, which is a first for many years.
And that's not new, that's something.
No, no, we've done that forever.
Well, I knew that, because you have to hand, you have to do the medical forms anyways, right? You have to hand it in and...
What are the grade levels, Kelly?
Well, grade seven is a big one, that's when you get the Meninge cockle and the tetanus and pertussis. And then now in 11th grade and 12th grade, you also have to have the Meninge cockle. So the 11th graders aren't fully yet, but the 7th graders and the first graders with their lead, everything is compliant, then the nurse has got all of the, all of the kids to, you know, with the parent's help, of course. So that's huge.
That's terrific, thank you for reviewing that with us, and for the folks who are attending virtually, and then folks can obviously go back and review it and access it from the website. And then current, current numbers, as we mentioned, where our schools are doing pretty well in terms of.
The Skrulls, you know, knock on wood, we've been doing pretty well. We've had a few situations where we've had positive cases, as Kelly, I think, said, and others have said, our close contacts at the moment have been fewer than last year. We've contacted and worked with our families, and so we've, so far, we've had fewer people quarantining than, say, at the, as we turned last year in January, and we're dealing with the hybrid.
And we're still able to provide supports for those kids, let's not quarantine?
Yeah, provide supports. All our teachers have set up for their classes a Google Classroom, so the students should know and parents should know where to go for information and assignments. And then every school has at least one person, in some cases more than one person, who will be checking in for live check-ins. It's not reproducing or live streaming the entire day. These are actual live check-ins where they're connecting with the family and the student, answering questions. You certainly can walk through assignments at that time and just make sure everybody understands. And also, if it's not the teacher himself or herself, the person will be the conduit of that information back to the teacher.
Great. That's terrific. Any other questions for Kelly before we?
Everything good.
Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
And thank you to all the parents for continuing to work with us, we really appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, thanks Gordon, and the next item is the update on feasibility study, this is exciting.
Yeah, so this is really exciting. So with the Mass School Building Authority, if people are not sort of up on where we are currently, and the pandemic really has kind of covered up sadly the great progress we're making. We've moved from the eligibility period where our statement of interest was finally brought into the Mass School Building Authority process for a potential project at East Long Meadow High School. And during the eligibility period, what we had to do was, we had a number of tasks that we had to agree to and commit to, but one of the biggest was the town appropriating the money for a feasibility study. And once the town did that, it moved us into the actual next phase, which is called the feasibility study. And the MSBA, Mass School Building Authority, sends the town what they call a funding agreement. And so the town has appropriated the entire amount or the estimated amount for a feasibility study. And once they've done that, the funding agreement is such, it's now signed, that we will be receiving 56.5% on, here's the key two words, eligible costs. Not all costs in the study or the process for preparing the study will be eligible, but 56.5%, so if you think of a dollar, Mass School Building Authority is picking up more than half of the eligible cost for the feasibility study. And the way it works, we know through our accelerated repair projects, that, that once you get going, and I think it's $20,000 segments?
In increments, yeah.
In increments?
That leads to put it into their.
You can put it into their system, and then they'll start to reimburse and send the town money as long as you're entering in, in those increments of at least $20,000.
So pay as you go.
Pay as you go, okay.
That's terrific.
And so we're, we're actually right on the precipice of diving fully in, because we have the funding agreement, and now this week, we've sent a draft to the MSBA, which is a draft request for services, and it's using their template, but the building committee met, they identified or volunteered individuals who had the expertise to really put together a good draft for a request for services. And these would be individuals like Steve Crucial, who works in the industry and is the chair of the building committee, Bruce Penny, who's the Department of Public Works superintendent, Joe Dunn, who's the facilities manager, Mrs. Blair, who's been the MCPPO officer for other projects. Not exactly sure how I got drafted, but I'm in that subcommittee as well. And so we drafted an RFS, Request for Services. We, the original draft, we ran by the entire building committee. We've since then added to that draft, I had a conference call last week with a couple folks from the Mass School Building Authority, they added some more revisions that they thought would be helpful. All of that went first on Wednesday and then again on Friday to the Mass School Building Authority. They're taking this week to offer any final revisions. The full building committee will meet again on Monday of 27th. If everybody votes to send that Request for Services, we will be advertising in the central registry, and we will be starting to field responses to our Request for Services. 14 days after we advertise, which I think is the 29th, we will be then acting on and going through those responses. And so now we're really getting into it, and eventually, when that process ends, we will have an project manager, and that's a group that will help advise us as we move through the feasibility study. So it's exciting, it's, we're moving, I don't have any visuals, I apologize. I'm really sure you don't want to see the red line draft. I'm sure that there are members of this school building committee who don't want to see it, but they're going to see it, and it's, it's going to be coming their way within about a week.
It's really exciting, positive news to see.
Yeah.
For progress and one step closer to actualizing what's been a longstanding issue for this committee.
I'm curious.
Sorry, I couldn't get it here before you graduate, Nick. But when you come back for your fifth reunion, my friend, there's going to be.
There might be a whole round, I'm beginning to almost there.
So think about that fifth reunion, it's exciting. Maybe 10.
Maybe 10, yeah. We're going 15, you can be 15, yeah.
I would like to go for the 15, but 10, you know, we'll take that.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, thanks to everybody who's on that committee for doing the hard work of.
I'm not sure that they know yet the work that's coming. This is, so far, it's just drafting, but we'll have, we'll have some work.
Commitment.
Yeah, we'll have some work coming down the road.
So thank you for that.
Sure.
It's all good.
Moving the district forward, which is terrific to see. All right, so we have some, any other questions before we move on, or we have some grants, we'll get them?
We do. So as you know, every year, I need the school committee to officially approve all of the FY, you know, the fiscal year's grants. So I listed them here so that you could see what we had last year, what we have this year, and then what the increase or decrease is. So just going down the list, you know, I always give you guys a little blurb of what each grant is, and it stays the same from year to year. So we have the Title I, the federal grants are the Title I, Title II-A, Title IV, Special Ed Allocation for Early Education, Special Ed IDEA. We have a new grant this year called the American Rescue Plan for IDEA. These funds will, basically, the majority of them will be for the Special Ed compensatory services, as you can imagine, going through this pandemic. You know, we need to support Special Ed, and we're very fortunate to get this, these new funds here. The next one underneath that is the American Rescue Plan for Early Childhood, specifically for early childhood, the same exact contract services. Another new one, Summer School Expansion Engagement Grant, I believe that was a matching grant. So we are very fortunate to have that to help us get that summer school, you know, help it be a success. Then we have our state grants, which is your MEFCO grant, Comprehensive School Health Services through DPH grant that Kelly oversees. Another new one here is the SOA Education Workforce Diversification. That is a new grant this year, and that's really for professional development and training. The last one is also a new grant, I believe you actually already approved this one, but I'll just state it because it's on the list, proficiency-based outcomes in languages other than English. So as you can see on the green that I've highlighted there, the grand total of those grants is $1,852,005. And I always remind everyone and remind the folks out there that, you know, we're very fortunate to have all of these grants, and if we didn't get these, then we would be needing to request this amount of money from, you know, the district or from the town in the budget process. So again, I just need the school committee to officially approve those.
And just one, one point, I think there are more, but I'll use the SOA Education Workforce Diversification. That was a competitive grant that we had gone after, Mrs. Brown had gone after. And it's both a very worthy goal, but SOA stands for Student Opportunity Act, and there are districts who, justifiably, through this, this act that's going to be basically implemented over the next seven years, are receiving millions of dollars. East Long Meadows demographics don't necessarily lend itself to receiving that kind of money through the Student Opportunity Act. And so this was a way, these grants that were offered was a way to help districts who maybe aren't receiving millions of dollars. And so we went after this one and got it. And so this helps us with some of our efforts in both training and maintaining staff, as well as looking at sort of how we go through the hiring process and recruit and so forth.
That definitely helps offset the budget and supports us in being able to bring high-quality programming to our students and our staff.
The only other comment I'd like to just make is that you don't see the S R 3 grant on here because that's, that's being worked on right now. It's the due date, I believe, is October 4th, so you'll be seeing that in the coming weeks, okay?
So we haven't received that for this?
No, we have not, the application is due by October 4th, so that's being submitted now.
We'll take out the 2021, 2022 grants as listed. Who takes out the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two grants as listed?
Motion made by Greg, second, second by Antonella, any further discussion? Thanks for doing that, um, and for showing, showing the differences between.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that looks good.
Really helpful, yeah.
Thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose nay, and that motion carries five to zero, thank you. And then we have a gift donation from Stop &amp; Shop.
We do, so in your packet, there's a request from Michael Fredeb, Principal of Maple Shade, for uh the school committee to approve a very generous gift of nine hundred and sixteen dollars eighty-six cents from Stop &amp; Shop A Plus Rewards.
Great.
And that will be deposited into the Maple Shade gift account to use for the students.
A really nice amount.
What are the rewards?
I can uh give you a brief overview, since I retired from there a few years ago. What you do is, parents can go to the, there's a Stop &amp; Shop A Plus website.
Yep.
They can sign up, designate a school, and the company matches one penny for each dollar spent through the course of the school year.
See, I gotta do that, because I'm always.
That's about it, so if you spend a hundred dollars, one dollar will be donated. Correct. Because you signed up for this. Because you signed up for it. And no cost to the individual. No cost to the individual, you have to do it on an annual basis, it doesn't roll over, so you designate a school, and that, that's why we had two at our previous meeting, and we have another one tonight, the checks all don't come out at the same time, it's how they process everything.
I gotta do it, because I spend a lot of money on.
Yeah.
Decent spending there.
They move my groceries, put in my car, I'll have to do that.
So that's, you know, it, it is, it, it is a worthwhile program for parents that. Because it's another avenue, it's another.
You know, people are shopping and.
Yep.
Right, it's, it's free money for the district, and it doesn't cost the parents anything, all they have to do is simply sign up.
In this Maple Shade, they'll get that money?
It goes in, well, to pay, yeah, the, the checks are specifically made out to each school. Like I said, in our previous meeting, I think we had uh Birchland and Mountain.
None of you, I think?
Yeah.
And this one, they don't, like I said, they don't all come in at the same time, and this one is for Maple Shade. If people sign up for Meadowbrook and the high school, those will be coming through the pipeline, so.
Each school has a gift account, and so each school's money goes into their gift account for the principal to use for the students.
So this principal can use this money however they want in the school, right?
So to give you an example, um.
Yes.
Now, probably eight, if not uh more years ago, when we were looking at possibly starting a strings program, um, one of the funding sources was uh the schools, would be the high school and probably Birchland's gift account. We still needed additional funding, but that's, that was put to that effort, and um now we have a pretty incredibly strong strings program that uh two years ago, I want to say rivaled in terms of numbers our traditional um instrumental music program. So, you know, it's, it's those kind of things, it goes back to the students, you can't use the gift account on something other than going back to students in some way.
Another avenue to get parents to sign up could be through the PTOs, because, you know, the PTOs work in conjunction with the high school, with the school principals. It's just a way to get the word out there, this being the beginning of the school year.
Right, I know, this is great.
And then you forget to do it, because I know I must have signed up years ago, but it's because years ago.
But again, you gotta, it doesn't roll over.
You don't want to be, you're just starting to think about it, yeah, alright.
Oh, so parents have to sign up every year?
Yes.
Yeah.
Totally.
It doesn't roll over.
Bring you into the, to Stop &amp; Shop.
Yeah.
Every year you gotta sign up.
You do it in the fall when you change your batteries in your, like, fire detectors.
Look at that.
There you go, there you go.
I do a lot of things on that day, except change the battery in the fire detector.
Did we do an official vote?
No.
I will, I will move to, I'll move to accept the Maple, Maple Shade gift donation from Stop &amp; Shop A Plus Rewards program in the amount of nine hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-six cents to be deposited into the school account.
Okay, I'll second it.
Motion made by Bill, second by Beth, any further discussion? Alright, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose nay, and that motion carries five to zero. Alright, now we have, thank you, Pam, a request from ELEAF, the Spark and Sprint.
Okay, so um, Ms. Rochella, at our last meeting, had um brought up the fact that um ELEAF is doing their Spark and Sprint, which I think they had done um two years ago.
Yes, they did.
Uh, and they are hosting it on Sunday, September twenty-sixth, so it's this coming Sunday. I think they have their volunteers, they have uh things up and running. The one thing that they do need, though, given that it is on a Sunday and it's gonna run at nine AM, um, they do need approval, because we do have the rule um that events on Sundays in the stadium and on the grounds won't start before one PM.
It's starting at nine, do we know what time they're coming to set up, I'm assuming it's.
Uh, I'm assuming they're probably gonna need.
At least.
At least a half hour, if not, maybe, maybe more, okay.
I think more than that, I think more than that.
Alright, so.
But it did get approved two years ago.
Right.
And it was at the same time.
Yeah.
And it was on Sunday?
On Sunday, yeah.
Yeah.
And we have made these um exceptions or waivers in the past, we've done it um with the little cross tournament on Sunday, because it's a sort of a recruiting event for our students, um, but certainly, it's always something that needs to come before all of you.
So just in respect of the Sunday rule, and the reason why we have the Sunday rule is, A, for a little quiet and for some relaxation for all the families in town, it's fine. But B, being right next to the same light as the church.
Right.
Um, could we ask specifically that they not blow the loud horns um during the mass times, that's something we can do? Because it's really the crux behind why we don't have events in the morning. The start time is nine o'clock, mass would be not in session at nine, so I'm just saying, you know, random air horns. If we could just put that out there, that it is Sunday morning, typically we don't have events, if they could just, they, it'll be loud, they'll be cheering, I know that's how it happened.
Yeah.
It's just the, the really loud noises.
Right.
Just so you're aware, they can't stop everything perhaps, but just worth, you know, acknowledging that the reason why we typically don't do Sundays is because of that.
Are they just gonna be?
That's all the parking in both uh blocks.
Parking, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, are they just gonna be running the track, they're not running through the?
The route's just the track, oh, I thought they had a five K.
Or do they use the cross-country track?
It is.
Oh, I thought it was the track.
I thought it was starting in.
It'd be ten times around, it'd be cut four.
Is there?
I thought it started, it starts.
DESI definitely starts and ends.
It starts and ends at the stadium.
Maybe it is the cross-country.
Could be the cross.
Um, our course starts in the um middle field, it's not, well, not on the field, but it's kind of in between the um fence of the uh stadium and the tennis court. So it kind of, and then you would do like laps around the school, but it does end on the track, though. There's, there's one lap on the track.
That's probably what they're doing.
When you're getting, you get to.
Yeah, so that's probably, probably the last lap is on the track.
Yeah.
As you enter in, the crowd goes wild.
Yeah.
Good stuff, Nick.
Alright.
Go ahead, Antonella.
Yep, I get home. I'd like to make a motion to approve the request from ELEAF for the Spark and Sprint by here, it's on Sunday, September twenty-sixth, at nine AM.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Antonella, second by Beth, any further discussion? I just hope people sign up, obviously, the proceeds from this come directly back into the schools, we saw that last meeting.
Right.
I mean, ELEAF, they donate a lot of money to our schools, our teachers, to help serve our kids, so I do hope that a lot of people do sign up for this.
The site for ELEAF again is.
It's on here.
The what?
The website.
One, kind of.
No, you register at runsignup.com, you got your.
Yeah, so I know they have Facebook, just so people can get to this later, they can find out.
They do, and it is on their Facebook link.
You can, and if you, if you Google East Long Meadow Educational Endowment Fund, it will bring you right to the website.
So Antonella, are they at the point now where they're able to give, I know that they, they have certain rules they go by, but once they hit that million-dollar point, I think they were able to give what they make in the course of the year um to the students, are they at that point? I don't know if they've discussed it or anything, where like the forty-six thousand they gave this past year would have been, I almost think what they collected, wasn't it, for the year?
I don't think they got anything last year.
So it must have been from the year before, when, alright.
Um.
Because once they.
There weren't any fundraisers last year for.
Because the one they got, we said was, once they got a million dollars, then it was there.
They must have done well. That's just it, but maybe they did well in terms of the um undominant self, but everything that they do give now, it's, it's finally getting to the point where the kids are gonna start seeing a lot more of it.
Yeah.
It's a lot of money that they.
Yeah.
It is.
It is.
I mean, forty-six thousand, that was the biggest they've, they've ever given out, and that, that was significant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's a lot of money, and they work really hard to get the sponsors, to put on these events, um, to get donations, things like that. I mean, they do a lot of work.
They gonna do the gala again?
Yep, they, they've already been thinking about that, too.
Wow, please.
Yeah.
Can fadazzle our masks?
Yes.
Wow, we'll see.
At least coordinate colors.
Exactly.
But those anti uh fadazzlers, I'm like, yeah.
I don't know exactly what fadazzles. Here we go.
It was appropriate, it was appropriate.
Alright, so we will take a vote, unless there's further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose nay, and that motion carries five to zero, excellent.
So let them know.
Oh, no question, great event, so thank you to Don and Elcat, and thank you again, Nick, it was a pleasure meeting you tonight, and.
You said you didn't suppose we're being here.
I'll be bored of seeing you, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Bill, second.
Second.
Second by Beth, um, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, oppose nay, and that motion carries five to zero, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.